Call the meeting order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Here.
Rosack?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill Anspire?
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
Slightly, yes, Mayor. Item 10, there's been placed on your DS, a replacement exhibit for the ordinance on sewer improvement revenue bonds. It replaces the similarly named exhibit in the packing material that was distributed to you, but it's still on the agenda. I would like to request that item 11 be deleted from the agenda. We've had a little bit of an internal snafu and the version of the PACE resolution or ordinance that was sent out is not the actual, is not the latest version of it. And we just discovered that today, and so City Attorney hasn't had a chance to review it. It's not that time-sensitive, so it can be on the October agenda, so with your permission, I'd like to have item 11 withdrawn.
Item 10, will it stay the same?
Yes, the item is the same, it's just that there's a replacement exhibit.
Do we need to have a motion to approve the change, changes to the agenda? Call your motion, Your Honor. Second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
We'll move into public comment, but remind everybody we do have a three-minute limit, and ask the City Attorney to be our timekeeper for that. He would like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name.
My name is Patrick Simpson. I just bought a house in Streeter on South Second Avenue, 203 South Second Avenue, May 25th. And on First Avenue, there's some people that has a house, their backyard adjoins my backyard. And every time I go out into my yard to do something, they have three pit bulls with a three-and-a-half to four-foot-high fence, just like chicken wire. I'm handicapped, I couldn't run if my life depended on it. I've got three grandkids that love to play in Grandpa's backyard, and if one pit bull would get a hold of these kids, it'd be bad enough. But if one of them crosses that fence and comes across, you know the other ones are gonna be right behind him. I've tried to talk to these people, they won't do nothing. I've talked to your animal control warden, and she told me, and I need to get off my ass and go over and spend all my time at the neighbors, so the neighbor and the dog can get to know me. I said, "I've got better things to do with my time than do that." I've talked to the Steeder Police Department, they told me to shoot them. If this is what you guys want, this is what you're gonna get. But if I have to shoot these dogs, it could be a bloodbath because the neighbor's gonna shoot back. They have a three-and-a-half to four-foot-high chicken wire for full-grown pit bulls, and I'm not trying to pick on pit bulls. It's any dog with a vicious character needs more than chicken wire around their yard. I've already talked to Pontiac, and I've talked to Ottawa, and they're, they're already gonna talk about this and give something, because this is BS. I don't know if any of you got children or grandkids, how would you like to walk out and have a pit bull or any type of vicious dog eating your kid alive? If there's three of them, if one gets started, the other ones are gonna jump in. There needs to be something in the Streeter ordinance where there has to be at least a six-foot-high, and I'm not saying privacy fence, cyclone fence, concrete wall, I don't care what it is. There needs to be something. Last Thursday, I was out just mowing my yard. I've gotta mow against that fence. The dogs were up on the fence, I was climbing off the side of my mower to keep from getting my left arm bit. I don't know if this is what you guys want or not. It's something you need to consider.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And like I said, I've already discussed this with your animal control, her and I already told her to get off my property, so don't send her back. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, then we'll move into the agenda items. Item one.
Mayor, Council, items one, two, and three are all really about the same item, and that is the tax increment financing district on the city's east side that you've been working on for several months. First ordinance adopts the plan, which you've seen, and we did copy it again, because it just put a lot of extra copy that you've been putting to this plan through the hearings. And the second one adopts the project area, which is up there on the, on the easel minus that added equipment property that has been deleted from the final legal description. And then the third ordinance actually adopts and establishes this, this new TIF area, and this is a somewhat cumbersome process, but it's the one dictated by statute. So it's my request that you approve these ordinances in that order.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to pass the ordinance approving the redevelopment plan and projects for the Streeter Route 18 East TIF District. Some move. Second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item two, I'd entertain a motion to pass the ordinance designating the redevelopment project area for the Streeter Route 18 East TIF District. Some move, Your Honor? Second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to pass the ordinance approving the tax increment allocation financing for the Streeter Route 18 East Tax Increment Financing District. Some move. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item four. Mayor, Council, a year ago or so, you authorized staff to proceed negotiations with several units of local government in Livingston County to expand, significantly expand, the Streeter Area Enterprise Zone. We ran into some, some problems with that, both in terms of our preparations as well as Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and we sort of had to restart that process with a consultant that was hired with Development Consortium out of St. Peters, or out of Petersburg. And so they have revised the strategy, and so now we are coming at this again, and there are, although this is one item on your agenda, there's actually two action items. One is the ordinance that establishes, and the other is a resolution authorizing you to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with six other units of government, those being LaSalle County, Livingston County, the Village of Dwight, the Village of Forest, the City of Fairbury, and the City of Pontiac. Those seven districts will constitute the partners in the Streeter Area Enterprise Zone. City of Streeter will continue to be the lead and dominate the governing body for them. The City Manager of Streeter will continue to be the zone administrator for it. But there are, besides the boundary changes and the properties that are brought into it, mostly which include Speth Douglas site and several industrial sites around some of those other towns, the two principal changes in terms of the incentives that were not in the previous enterprise zone are that it allows the enterprise zone credits to apply to certain types of affordable housing projects, whereas in the past, it would only apply to commercial and industrial projects. And the second is that it creates a second tier of property tax abatement for projects that are called, that we call railroad sector projects, that are within a mile and a half of a junction of two Class 1 railroads. In truth, there's only two places in the Streeter Area Enterprise Zone where that occurs, and that's on the south side of Streeter and on the north side of Dwight. So those areas will have extra incentives for property tax abatement that spread over seven years instead of the five years that it applies elsewhere to try to encourage the development of industrial rail-related projects in those two locations. Once all of the units of government approve this, then it'll be bundled with the hearings and the transcripts and the other documents related to last month's hearing and some other information in all, and brought to the DCEO, and so it should be completed and certified, we're expecting by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to authorize an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Streeter and the City of Fairbury, the City of Pontiac, the Village of Dwight, and the Village of Forest to amend the Streeter Area Enterprise Zone. Some move. Second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Now I'd entertain a motion to pass the ordinance amending the Streeter Area Enterprise Zone. Some move. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
I, I thought we'd be the first to approve this, but I just now got a text that the Village of, the City of Fairbury approved the same two documents this evening, about half an hour ahead of you.
It's only because Adam's gone so the shorter drive. I had to make it shorter, quicker. Item five?
Mayor, this is an annexation ordinance to add into the city limits the property that we know as Spring Lake Park, which the city has owned for many years. It became contiguous fairly recently, however, because of an annexation agreement with CMJs that brought in property that crossed the street from, from Spring Lake Park, so bringing it into the city, I mean, we have, our police have jurisdiction out there anyway, because under state law, property that's owned by the city can be treated as if it's in the city. This will eliminate any confusion that has sometimes happened in the city, so it's recommended that ordinance be approved.
I'd entertain a motion to pass the ordinance annexing property commonly known as Spring Lake Park Eagle Township, Counties of LaSalle and Livingston, into the City of Streeter. For a second. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item six.
Chief Burge, let me give the report for this district. The City Fire Department's been awarded a grant for $118,000 from the Homeland Security of the United States. But that, that number includes the 5% portion of the city, which is just over $5,000, 5% matching funds for that grant. The purpose of that grant is to buy two new cardiac heart monitors and defibrillators and two mechanical CPR devices, with the hopes of improving our cardiac survival rates here at Streeter. It's also, the cardiac monitors that we're looking to buy would replace ones that were donated a couple of years ago from a local ambulance company, and it was also the same ones that AMP uses, so that would make patient transfer a lot easier. We can actually just unplug our cable and plug it into their monitor, and that speeds up the transfer of care to the patient. So we're asking the council to approve the, so we can accept that grant from the Department of Homeland Security.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to authorize a grant agreement for the acquisition of fire department equipment from Homeland Securities. For a second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Before we vote, I would just like to say that I know Gary did a lot, and I believe firefighter Levy was a big part of doing this as well, I'd like to thank him. He asked me to write a letter on behalf of him, and I did, and like the chief says, what a big help that's gonna be, that's, that's a lot of equipment, and it will really make a difference in our town, so. Thank you.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item seven. Is this Jeremy, or is this the chief?
That's me. So the fire department's, our public training facility off the end of 10th Street, the Jim Rose Lane, we put out the bid, concrete work there, and we're asking to accept a contract with Dennis Concrete for just over $63,000, so we can concrete both driveways coming into the facility. This is the burn building that'll be erected next month, and it'll put concrete up and around that building, so we can get the trucks in and out of there. So we're asking that you approve the contract with Dennis Concrete.
Will this pretty much finalize this project?
It'll put us very, very closer.
I'd entertain a motion to authorize awarding a contract to Jim Dennis Construction, 8 Streeter, Illinois, for concrete improvements at the Fire Department Public Safety Training Facility. Some move.
Second.
I'd just like to make one comment, too, with the Harrison family and Mr. Rhodes, for their contributions to this project also.
The project is financed by those contributions, as you have said, plus $300,000 from the city's TIF funds, because it's in the Streeter South Industrial TIF. But with all of the improvements, including these that you're approving tonight, plus the signage and the grass and whatever else, we're, we're still gonna be below budget.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item eight?
Item eight is the, is the recommendation of the Plan Commission, this is the receive and file part, so it's, I think you have to act on that, and then the ordinance, which is number nine, I'll ask Jeremy to give the report from the time commission.
I'd entertain a motion to place on file the Plan Commission's recommendation, 2018-10, approval of a change in zoning property commonly known as 108 North Colorado Avenue from R1B Single Residential to C General Commercial. Have a motion, please. Please. Just a second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item nine, Jeremy, you're on.
Thank you. Yeah, the last week's sub-lan commission being, they, they liberated over the request from Timbado of Quick Kill, who has now moved around from their main street location to the 108, or 108 Colorado, but it's the former hometown lumber building on Iowa, Quick Kill has moved in there. They'd like to demolish the, the old home of 108 Colorado, which is adjacent to their property across the alley. They'll be putting up a fence along the north property line to screen it from the residential house that's left, paving it, and we're using it for employee parking. So, Plan Commission, you have your recommendation approval, now it's in front of you guys.
Was, was there any negative comments in the public hearing?
No, 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 no comments from the public, no one. Everyone was noticed within 250 feet, it was in the paper per statute, but no comments, besides Mr. Viano at the meeting.
Do you know what they're gonna do with the old building?
Didn't say.
I'd entertain a motion approving a change in the zoning and amending the district zoning map for property commonly known as 108 North Colorado Avenue from R1B Single Family Residential to C3 General Commercial Zoning District. Some move. Good. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item ten?
Thank you. Item ten is the, almost at the end of the Center Street, required IEP ordinances for a low-interest loan. This one basically says the city is willing to fund the project out of our sewer, sewer use revenues. The IEP will basically issue bonds to service the low-interest loan during construction, and the city will pay that money back. The current rate, I believe, is 1.67%, over a period of 20 years. This is the same loan mechanism we've used for Pratt Key, to sort of price the upgrade water treatment plant over the past couple of years. This ordinance tonight authorizes no new debt. All it does is says the city is willing to move the project forward, not to exceed a number of 1.8 million, that's including all contingencies. If this is approved, there'll be a 30-day period in which the public can petition to put it on a referendum if required. 690 signatures are required to put it on a referendum, if the public would like to see that. In the event that that backdoor referendum does not get the petitions in 30 days, the ordinance will be sent to IEP, and the loan document will be finalized, at which point the city will go out to bid, and then the actual loan will only be for the amount of the actual bid. So we'll go out to get, go out, get a low bid, and then that'll be what the loan document is for.
In reality, what's going on here is the state of Illinois issues these bonds, but they don't issue it under the, it's issued under the, under the authority of the state of Illinois, but the state of Illinois is not required to back up the bonds. So by having them as a statewide bond, that's how we get a lower interest rate, but, but we still have to back them up. Every city that's involved, and there's multiple cities involved, have to go through this process, so. But our costs are substantially less, substantial, really a lot. For example, our, our bond council cost, if it's priced enough, we cut it in half, is about 20% of what it would be on a standalone bond, and that savings rippled through, and that's, that's the advantage that comes from all these cities consolidating this way. 1.67 is a really good rate, and it has saved us, it's not as good as grant money, but it has saved us a lot of money as we do these sewer projects.
Is there a way for the state to wash their hands of any responsibility?
You could say that.
I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance authorizing the issuance of wastewater improvement improvement bonds. Some move. For a second. Second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
Item 11 is deleted from the agendas, so we'll leave it. Item 12?
Oh, I'm sorry, clerk. Item 12 is, it's a fairly simple resolution that the State Department of Transportation requires for, even when it's just a parking lane shut down, and this is this, the annual Defender-5K, I think this is the third year that they've done this?
Fourth.
The third or fourth, if you can.
Fourth.
Starts at St. Michael's and moves down and comes back, and so in order for that, for that, for us to use Highway 23, we have to pass this resolution.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to authorize temporary closure of one lane of South Bloomington from Livingston Street to 12th Street in connection with St. Michael's Annual Defender-5K. Some move. For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Item 13?
Thank you. Item 13, this will, this is the last component of the city's 2018 roadway project. This will be the cave seal work along Stanton Street from Bloomington all the way to Loudl, then Ridge Road and Sylvan Lane. So this is the same cave seal treatment that was applied to 12th Street earlier this year. So it's a, it's a maintenance coat, basically an oil and chip followed by a micro-surface seal coat, to basically hold the, to seal pavement from weather, and to keep the water out and extend the life of the pavement until such time as we can do a major renovation. The, we had two bids, and the little bid was AC pavement striping, so we'd recommend approval and try to get the work done before the snow flies.
Are there any concerns because their bid was half the price of the other?
No, that was actually, their, their bid was right where my estimate was, the other one, I don't think was too excited about the work late in the year.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to authorize awarding a contract to AC Pavement Stripping Company from Elgin, Illinois, utilizing MFT funds for the 2018 MFT road project, which includes cave seal work on Stanton Street, Ridge Road, and Sylvan Lane. Have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second. Any other discussion?
Have we used them before?
Pardon?
Have we used them before, Jerry?
It's the same company that did 12th Street.
Yeah.
Have we used them in the past as well?
Any other comments, questions? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with Councilman Scarborough abstaining from Section B, and Councilwoman Bedai abstaining from payment on the coal cards for the downtown area. Some move. For a second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Anspire?
Aye.
New city official comments, Sheriff, you have any?
Yesterday, I had the pleasure to host McLean County Antifa Auto Club. I came to Streeter for, they started out with a tour of the murals, but then enjoyed lunch, some shopping downtown, a visit with one of the auto shops around Streeter, so I just wanted to just pass along some of their comments, they love the history. One of the couples that attended was a former Streeter couple who hasn't been back for quite some time, and decided to come back at St. Streeter, and they were very impressed with all the improvements that have happened downtown, with some of the new businesses, the old businesses that they, that were still around from the last time they visited, that have kind of stuck it out, but they just had so much good to say, so I just wanted to relay that and just thank everybody from, that's had anything to do with it, whether it was helping with, put flowers in a pot, to flags on the poles, to opening a business, I mean, it's just been, there's a lot of really great feedback from that group, so it's just nice to hear people that have noticed the work that we put in.
I have a couple of things. It's a political time of the year, signs are coming out, please remember that there's ordinances on sign placement, and that's not on city property. If it's on private property, please get permission. In general, a city property would be in front of a sidewalk towards the street, in most cases. If you're in the wrong place, it could get picked up, generally, so we need to make sure we do that, get any questions, call the city, and they'll get your copy of the ordinance. Also, signs may only be six square feet, political signs, that's like a two-by-three sign, that's it. The other thing is, like, talk about something good, is our retail sales tax receipts for this year, looking at them, this is far into the year, it looks like we're gonna have a record here, the highest they've ever been, over $3 million. Last year was also over $3 million, and that's very good, all taxpayers should be very happy about that, because if that was a low number, your taxes would be higher to make up the difference, to run the departments in the city. And I think this shows that some of the things that are going on right now, increased sales in the community, new stores coming in, is a very good sign for Streeter.
I'd just like to, just one comment. As a veteran, I've always felt very strongly about citizens' rights, but yesterday I had the privilege of spending a day with 73 other veterans from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Cold War era, touring various monuments, military rights programs in Washington DC. It was a fun, filled day, I guess you could say, but more emotional, but if anything, my resolve about how I feel about those is even stronger. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Some move. Second. Clerk, call or roll please.
Bedi.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Merrill Anspire.
Aye.
Assistant.